Recording in progress.
Okay, Mayor, I think it's all yours.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, folks. Okay, set a couple of ground rules as we are again in a virtual environment, which is not necessarily the ideal environment to do this. Being that it is virtual, it's hard to see sometimes who's talking and when we're talking. So we'll ask everyone, when they do speak, to announce themselves. If they have something specific that, you know, you're trying to get through, try to give me a visual cue, as well as possibly a note to Michael so that he can address the cue cycle as well. We are going to have a public hearing today on an ordinance. It's to start at 7:30. If we're in the middle of something, maybe the time manager report, we will finish that and right after that, we'll go into that, that public hearing. And during that time period, we will allow for the public, those people on this Zoom call, to be part of the conversation. I'll ask that, again, in an environment as such, we be respectful of time. We'll ask it be no more than a three-minute comment. And again, we don't want to have to, you know, be the parent here, but if something gets out of control, we'll ask kindly, you know, once for you to, you know, be respectful of the time. And then if we need to, we'll have to mute the microphone. But I don't anticipate that being an issue. We are also, I want to also make mention that, you know, in this environment, when this was set up for the specific meeting, it was intended that this would be a live meeting in council chambers. Obviously, that's not the case. We're dealing with, again, unprecedented times with this Omicron variant, and we've decided for this past meeting and this meeting to be virtual. We hope to be back in town council chambers for next meeting. We were going, we're likely going to keep this open so that those people that feel they could not make right or don't feel comfort in having a conversation or bringing a comment in this particular venue can do so in person in the next meeting. So, you know, want to make sure that I say that upfront, so people feel comfortable should that be the case. And we included on each of the council members' emails, as well as on the minutes, the comments that have been provided preemptively, the letters that we received, as well as any comments that we receive via Facebook Messenger or on here on Zoom. So that's kind of the ground rules to start off. I look forward to having a great meeting and we'll start it from here. All right. So I'm going to call to order, like to call to order the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council Meeting of North Branford at 7:09 PM on Tuesday, the 20th of, I'm sorry, the 18th, I apologize, the 18th of January 2022. A salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay. Roll call, please. Kathleen, would you mind doing roll call? Would you prefer that I, did I, did I do that here?
I think we should have you do it only because I don't want to miss anybody. That's really important. I know there's been some changes with the last election and I don't want to miss anyone.
Not a worry. And I'm going to call anytime there's, in this particular meeting, anytime there's a vote, I'll call that, see that you don't have to worry about that. And we'll make sure that you're aware of who's voting. Again, we'll make sure that we're telling you whose motions and who's seconded and for that point forward as well. Okay, so roll call, Mayor Jeffrey McMillan, present. Deputy Mayor Thomas Sampaio.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Abelson.
Here.
Councilmember Rose Marie Angeloni.
Here.
Councilmember Marie Diamond.
Here.
Councilmember Michael Downs.
Present.
Councilmember Walter Goode.
I'm sorry, here.
Thank you, Walt. Councilmember Vincent Mace.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ron. I think Ron did here. I know Ron had some issues with, there he is, okay. Sometimes these Zooms are difficult with WiFi's and everything. Okay, all is, move on to the next agenda item. I'll move for a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting.
This is, this is Counselor.
I'm sorry.
This is Counselor Angeloni making a motion to approve the minutes with the following corrections. On page six, item 13A, the date should be January 25th for the ARPA meeting, not February 25th. And then in item 13C, on page seven of the minutes, the second last paragraph should read, Counselor Angeloni does not believe this is a rush item for a summer project and is fine to bring this back in the future when there's a more definitive timeline.
I'll second with those amendments.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing those changes, all approv, approved? The eye?
Eyes.
Opposed? I believe that, thank you. All right, where are we in time? 7:12. Okay, we're going to start into reports from committees and boards of commissions. 3A Economic Development Commission, Roger Solary reports.
There's quite a detailed report from their minutes are included in the meeting, starting on page 12 of our iPad with the minutes. They had several guests at their last meeting. The Shoreline Chamber is going to be seeking money from our town, from the, from the towns in the Shoreline Chamber. They're looking for $25,000 from ARPA funds to help businesses in the area, to assist them with issues that they've had during COVID and having some type of a coaching possibility. When that comes forward through the EDC, I think it would be important that the Chamber actually come and tell us about this program. As noted, the solar project, everything has been approved. And if they haven't started construction, it was slated for January 10th, but due to weather, it could be a little bit off. But they're going to be starting and hopefully that will be operational by May of this year. And then there, the Pines of Northford, which is a multi-unit luxury apartment that has been moving forward. And the next item on their agenda is, there is some text amendments to zoning that they will be presenting to P&amp;Z within the next month, month and a half at one of their meetings. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Rose. Again, we're getting a little feedback, get some reports of some feedback. So just make sure everyone's on mute when, when primary person is speaking. Please do go on mute so that there's not feedback on the Facebook Live feed that we're getting. I do appreciate that. Okay, so item 3B Parks and Recreation, please.
No meeting.
3C Police Commission.
No meeting this month.
Thank you, Counselor Diamond. 3D Fire Commission.
Nothing to report at this time. They will be presenting to us later on in the meeting.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor E. Board of Education, Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
No meeting.
3F Planning and Zoning Commission, I will take that. There was a meeting held, let me grab my notes here, apologies. It was held January 6th, Thursday, 6:30 PM. Had a public hearing on the application, 2021-18, 108 Old Post Road, R-40 Zone subdivision. There was a good amount of conversation about that subdivision and how it was considered being built in Sunset Ridge Estates. There was also new business on table for capital improvement program. I believe that's the, both programs are going to be moved forward to the next meeting and we'll have an update from there. 3G Finance Subcommittee.
There's no meeting. Later on in the agenda, there's appointments to the Finance Committee from the Town Council. And after that's complete, we can set our, some meeting dates, starting in February.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, 3H Permanent Project Building Committee, subset I, NBHS update, and subset II, NBPD update.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't know, I think I saw one member, I'm not sure, we have, Al Rose normally comes to comment on that. I don't think there's anything too pressing, but I saw Dave Palumbo, I think was on the call. I don't know if the, or if they want to split and talk about the police project, but I think it could certainly hold until the next meeting unless they had a comment or two.
Everything's going, everything's going well. It's Victor. Dave's on the line, too. There's really nothing to comment on. We're going through plans and submittals, working through Stanley T. Williams stuff, I guess, is going out tomorrow for the 19th for a walkthrough. So everything's on track. Dave, if you got anything to comment on?
No, well, you know, we'll have our regular meeting tomorrow. So we'll have more of an update for your next council meeting, Mr. Mayor. But everything is going very well. As Victor said, we are on track for the school, high school is going well, and we'll have our first in-person meeting tomorrow.
Wonderful. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
3I Public Safety Communication Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Okay. Agenda item four, Town Manager's Report. Michael?
Yes, I start with the COVID testing and vaccine notifications. Obviously, there's a standard report that is in the packet. Numbers kept climbing for January. I guess the, the small bit of good news is that it appears that the state of Connecticut may have plateaued potentially. Still waiting for, for numbers on that. But so far in January, if you look at, I think at the fourth page, 200, last week, so a total for January of 465, I'm sorry, four, yes, 465 cases in North Branford, one fatality recently, 87-year-old male. So we continue to do the best we can with continued testing, test kits. Obviously, I report on that as well, vaccines and, and continue to push that. I think, I, before I get into the report on, on the, the testing and the, and the mass distribution, I think most of you may have heard today that the government site is live. I was on it, it's www.covidtests plural.gov that you can go and register to get for free at-home COVID tests that'd be, that'll be shipped and mailed to your home. So that, I'm not sure everybody heard that today, but that went live and it is up and running. So I have seen it and looked at it. So that's, it's out there.
Michael, can I ask that, Togat TV or someone can post that in the comments here in the Facebook chat? So they have a link to it. You can put that link in. Very simple site to utilize, run through the US Post Office. So we can add that to the, to the meeting minutes. That'd be fantastic.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, so yeah, they, I don't know if there's any, you know, questions about the report and the numbers, but we, again, hope that we match what's happening or what we're seeing at the state level, that North Branford, our positive cases start to plateau and retreat. But that might just, you know, might, might be a week or two before we see that. But that would be good news if, in fact, we have, have peaked. So, you know, the, the report is, is there and I'd be happy to answer any questions. So I just see, I think Anthony Esposito, thank you for putting the, in the chat, you can see the, the link to the website for the case, for the test kits. And I guess I'll segue into the next item B for my report, report on the test kits and mass distribution event. I do have a quick memo in, in the packet for you, but I just want to say how, how excellent everybody performed and, and the team really pulled together on this. I can't thank them enough for everyone involved. And this was, this was our second event that went through a pre-registration using the rec department's registration software. It was much more efficient for us in this time and, and a lot of data in there that we, I put into the memo, but I'll run through here. Basically, the, you know, wasn't a lot of time to pull it together, but everybody did come together, worked real hard to push through 900 units. And basically, we broke it down into 150 cars in three different time slots from 8:30 to 9, 9 to 9:30, 9:30 to 10. And we're able to give out all, but I think, I think there were 27, I think I reported 27 no-shows in that. But we were able to get off all of those and conclude by 10 o'clock in very tough, cold conditions. But again, want to thank all of the staff and volunteers and Medical Reserve Corps, East Shore Health Department, and everybody involved from, you know, rec and police fire. And I'm always afraid that I'm going to, I'm going to miss somebody in recognizing somebody. That's why I put it in the, in the memo format for you. But I guess the last paragraph I'll read, that's just Kerry Haynes, Jim Buck, Anthony Esposito, Kevin Hallen, Chief Hallen, Deputy Chief Lovelace, police traffic duty officers, Fran Marola, Public Works crews, volunteers from Medical Reserve Corps, and I'm sure there were, there are others. I hope I didn't miss anybody. But it did come together quite well. And I think we're very proud of that distribution, that event. So it wasn't just the test kits, a number of masks were given away as well. And we still have masks, if anyone in the community needs one, they can call Town Hall, come and pick those up. Those are the N95 masks that we have available.
Michael, I want to echo the sentiments and commend the extraordinary effort that you folks have all put together, both townspeople that volunteered as well as our, our town staff. I've heard very good feedback about the, the event. It went well. We're certainly learning and continue to learn how to distribute and work in these environments. So thank you all that have, that were out there. I know it was an extremely cold day. So a great effort and a great outcome. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Mayor. And I'm remembering, I gotta remember Jessica Tano certainly was in and part of the planning, but I, I went, we lost power on Friday and before the event. I went up to Rec Department and kind of hunkered down with Jessica and Kerry and Sarah, entire team up there, just really, they were like a call center up there. They were so good. It was, it was just amazing to watch. And again, I appreciate the effort was, was well done.
Great, thank you.
And on the issue of test kits, we are also going back to the state, looking for additional kit, kits. I know Jim Buck was working, I think he's on the call, that he's put in a request through the state system, see if we can get even more test kits to deliver as well. So we're working on that, plus the federal site that we want people to be aware of. I think that's it for item 4B.
4C HR Position Update.
Yes. So I wasn't able to fully report out and we carried this item over. So I prepared a memo for you and also circulated the report. So in essence, we, we have an issue we're dealing with, with HR, not an issue, but a project, if you will. So this started back within the budget in July. So in August, we were able to get the services and function of a company called HR, Human Resources Consulting Group, and I mean Operations Inc., which is a consult, Human Resources Consulting Group. Operations Inc. came in to give us an internal audit, if you will, a look at what we're, we're doing and not doing, and gave us a report, an assessment essentially, not so much in, in audit, but more of an assessment of where we stood with procedures, protocols, policies. So I've outlined that in, in the memo, also given copies to, to the council to look at those. And there were 12 items addressed in there that we're working on to fix those and have addressed all but one with respect to what's called the I9s. And what we're going to do is, we're working right now with Operations Inc. to, to bring them back in to sort of then now do the sort of the audit of how, how did we do, does everything look like, you know, it makes sure that everything's in compliance, that everything's up, up to speed. And so going forward, I'd like to take a look at whether or not there's a market out there for a part-time person, or if we're looking at HR as possibly some, some company that could provide the expertise, both onsite a couple of days a week or virtually, to handle and improve the policies and practice and procedures of, of an HR department. So, so going through that process, finishing up what they did with the assessment, have a, basically an audit or completion of that to know where we stand. And then looking forward to be able to deal with the training issues, the onboarding policies, FMLA, that sort of thing, sort of the day-to-day nuts and bolts kind of thing. So it's a work in progress, but we made some progress and continue to finish up those recommendations, continue to work with Operations Inc. to finish up, and then try to move to the next level and get the HR function covered at this point.
Okay, thank you. We're going to finish up Town Manager Report with D Statement Regarding the Court's Decision for Propane Facility on Sierra Road.
Yeah, I, I think that the council wanted to, I don't know, Mayor, if you, if you wanted to handle that or, or have the town attorney, I know Vince, Vince Moreno is on as well. I think that was prepared statement, now that the P&amp;Z has been able to deal with the court case.
Yeah, I'd like to have the town attorney take a moment and read the prepared statement. Mr. Moreno, would you mind taking the baton?
You there, Vince? Yes, yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I am looking for my, my copy. I want to make sure I read it appropriately. Sorry, I thought I had it up on my screen. If not, I think I remember it good enough, but. Mr. Mayor, I cannot locate it. So if you will, I will say the following. The town denied the application at the zoning level. There was an appeal taken to the trial court. The town prevailed at the trial court and convinced the trial court that the, the zoning commission acted within its authority. The appellate court reversed the trial court's findings. And the town took an appeal, it's called a petition for certification. Essentially, it's an appeal to the Supreme Court. In order to appeal to the Supreme Court, you need to get approval. The Supreme Court denied our request for certification. And there's no other legal remedy for the town to pursue at this point. We have exhausted our avenues. And at this moment, what we are waiting for is the court to render its decision downward. So we'll go from the Supreme Court to the appellate court, from the appellate court to the trial court, from the trial court to the zoning commission. At that time, when it reaches the zoning commission, and we do not have an exact timeline of when that will be, it could be anywhere from, I'm going to say, two weeks to two years. It really, I think it's going to be longer than two weeks and it's going to be less than two years, but it's going to be within that timeframe. The zoning commission will be compelled by court order to approve that facility. We are presently examining with the commission what we can do to protect any concerns. And we'll continue to explore those options, Mr. Mayor. But at this point, the town has exhausted its legal remedies.
Say thank you, Vince Moreno. Again, we'll have updates as we learn our next steps, as we learn from the appellate court our next steps. And we will advise the town as we are advised ourselves on this end. So thank you very much. I am going to put a pause on the town meeting for just a moment here, as we are going, it's 7:32, 7:32. And we have stipulated that public hearing at 7:30 for the proposed ordinance, number two, 2022-1, entitled, "An Ordinance to Regulate Pocket Bikes, Mini Bikes, Dirt Bikes, All Train Vehicles, and the Like." I'm going to open this up for public comment. For those folks that are here that would like to make a comment, please, if you can give a, I know not everyone's on camera, but if you are on camera, please give a cue to us or put into the chat so that we can, you know, just stick who's first and second and so on and so forth. We asked that your comments, again, are no more than three minutes. We don't want to have to, you know, parent this per se. So please be respectful, everyone's time. This, again, this will be something that we'll leave open for those folks that couldn't make it on this meeting today and want to have a conversation in person. Don't feel comfortable with this technology. We certainly understand that. This was, again, intended to be done in a live format. So we will do so in the next meeting. But with that said, I will hand the reins over to Michael and Anthony, if there is someone that is indicated for public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, before we start the public hearing, the notice has to be read into the record. And if you would like, I could do that for you.
Please do. So thank you, Counselor Angeloni. I do appreciate that.
Notice of Public Hearing Ordinance Number 2022-1. The North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance number 2022-1, entitled, "An Ordinance to Regulate Pocket Bikes, Mini Bikes, Dirt Bikes, Altering Vehicles, and the Like," as summarized below. The purpose of this new ordinance is to regulate the operation and use of pocket bikes, mini bikes, dirt bikes, altering vehicles, and any other similar vehicle on all public and private property within the town of North Branford, as authorized by CGS 14-390A. This ordinance is intended to regulate the operation and use of such vehicles in a manner not inconsistent with the provisions of Connecticut General Statutes 14-379 to 14-390, inclusive or any regulation adopted pursuant thereto. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the town clerk and posted on the town's website under News and Announcements. Click on BOE/TownDocuments/Ordnances, scroll down to ordinances. Dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this 22nd day of December 2021, Lisa Valenti, MMC, North Branford Town twenty-one, Lisa Valenti, M M C, North Branford Town Clerk, email public comments to public dot dash comments at townofnorthbranfordct.com. Publication date was January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, in the sound.
Thanks, there, Council Angelina. Again, to reiterate, this is the opportunity for, and not the only opportunity, again, I'll reiterate, for the townspeople to speak on this. We will look to make some changes to this ordinance if need be. I think there's already been some thought that we will look to change some of the verbiage on private property versus public property and further develop that. We're certainly not looking to, to change things, you know, or jurisdiction things for public property that are outside of ordinances that are already in place in the way of noise ordinance. So we'll look towards that. And again, this is the opportunity to have that conversation here, and we'll look forward to keeping it open for the next as well. Three minutes per comment, and we'll try to keep this to a minimum, call it half hour, forty-five minutes if need be.
Mr. Mayor, it's Mike Paulus. I don't see any recognized in the chat, but I do see a one hand from Cliff Potter. And there are reactions that people can use in terms of the raised hand down at the bottom as part of the reactions that might help. But I see one hand at this point, and that was Cliff Potter.
All right, Mr. Potter, the floor is yours, sir. Got to take it off you, Mr. Potter.
Okay, I think I got it now.
You can hear you, sir.
Okay, I'm going to look at this as a lack of, or actually damage, very damaging to the auger field, which is leased to a farmer to make income off of the hay he sells off that field. If you've been by that field, you can see the damage is very extensive. I'd say that the hay field crop this year is in danger. And therefore, you're taking money out of Mr. Auger's pockets. There comes a fine line between recreational fund, and when you're actually hurting the income of a local farmer, you've crossed the line of respect. And it doesn't seem to be any respect for the town property. It's gotten so bad, they used to have ruts that they were staying in. Now, if you go by every inch of that field has been damaged. And it's beyond my comprehension, why are people allowed to do this when in fact you're hurting the very history of our town, the farming? Those farmers work hard. I mean, they have enough problems with weather and other conditions to have human conditions endanger their income. That's not a healthy situation. It's got to be brought under control. Our town property has to stop being torn up. And, you know, it's, it's a lack of respect, and also you're endangering the income of our local farmers and the history. You know, I don't know how much of hit these people can take, where it's finally getting out of control now. So again, it's not just about who could ride there. It's now you've damaged the field to such an extent that it affects the income of our local farmer. I'll wait for other comments, but that's basically the point I wanted to bring up. You've now hurt somebody's income. And that, I can end it right there.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. We appreciate your comments. Is anyone else in queue to have a comment? Mr. Rose?
You. Hi there. Thank you. I actually, I sent a letter into the town council earlier today, but I just wanted to summarize my thoughts a little bit for everyone. I was very happy to hear when you started talking about this, Mr. Mayor, that you guys are going to look at the language of public versus private property. I totally agree that there's an issue, and we need to try and protect the public property, but we need to try and do that without limiting what people can do on their own property. The limited hours that it talks about for use on private property of eight A M. to seven P M. on weekdays and nine A M. to eight P M. on weekends seems excessive to me. That's different hours than our town noise ordinance. And, you know, if I, I used an example in my letter of a snowmobile, you know, you're, if someone has a snowmobile and they can ride on their property without violating the noise ordinance, there's very limited days in Connecticut that we can do that. If you have snow on Tuesday, you might not have snow on Saturday. So if someone wants to go home from work, they shouldn't have to worry about getting off by seven o'clock at night to not be violating anything. So in general, that's kind of my thought, or a kid Saturday morning, if they want to jump on their dirt bike at eight forty-five in the morning, shouldn't be against the ordinance, as long as they're not in violation of any, you know, the noise ordinance or anything else. So that's just my thought on it. Again, I totally agree with everyone that on public property, we need to try and do more to stop damage and also to, you know, limit safety concerns of someone getting hurt on town property. And that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Great comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Information, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
In the package, there is a letter from a resident from Norfolk. Would you make a decision whether that should be read into the record because it is part of the package? And maybe others have not heard about the letter or have access to the letter.
Counselor Mace, we have decided to take those letters. We did receive a handful of them and entered them into the public records, or they're part of the minutes. So they will be available for anyone that wants to read through the letters. There's, there's some for, some against, per se, some in the middle, but we will certainly make them available. I don't want to single out any one particular record versus another as to give favoritism towards any specific viewpoint, but they will be all made as public record on the minutes.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Mayor.
By all means, sir. Mr. Auger, I believe I saw your hand.
You did. Thank you. Good evening to everyone. I just wanted to comment that I fully support the ordinance, both as a police commissioner, and I know I'm speaking for the rest of the commission, as well as a private citizen, that, you know, for years, we've had issues, but recently, it's gotten so out of control that be irresponsible not to act, both the destruction of public property, as well as just driving up and down streets, creating all types of, there's just too many reasons, too many things not to mention here, but it is at a point now where it would truly be irresponsible not to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Auger. Rose, is that your hand up or?
I just want it. Bonnie Samansky had typed in it into the chat, so I just want to read what she typed in. She sent, she sent a letter to the council, so that will be in the, in our packet and will become part of the minutes. Also, she also said the A T V riders have destroyed the, our walking trails, and the kids doing wheelies on Route eighty is dangerous to all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mansky. Appreciate that. Anyone else like to have comment? I don't see anything else in chat. Anthony, Michael, are we seeing anything else that I'm not aware of?
Mayor, it's Victor.
Yes, Mr. Andrew.
I just would like, I'd like to clarify what Freddie Auger had said, that the entire police commission voted on this in favor of taking the action to control the situation that's going on with all the A T Vs and the dirt bikes. I'd just like to clarify that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Peter Andrew, appreciate that. Any other comments?
Yeah, this is a, my, my name is Steve Cunningham. I'm a member of the North Branford Land Trust also. Others are here and have been for many years. I'm also highly in favor of this. A lot of our trails, I'm sorry for dialing a little late. I was on another church-related Zoom meeting, but the, a lot of our trails have been damaged, some of them significantly. People, we put up barriers, the barriers are dragged away. We put up signs, they're all torn down, or many of them are. And so it's, it's much worse over the years. It's just, must be more kids with A T Vs. So it's, it's, it's pretty much destroyed many of our trails. Make them hard to use, you know, they get all muddy, and then they're difficult to walk on because of grass and the, and the weeds and so forth are all chewed up. So you probably heard the same comments. Again, you may have heard these over the last ten minutes, but I just want to say I'm highly in favor of the new ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, there's a comment in the chat from somebody, if you want to read it.
Certainly, let me go into there. Okay, so this is from Donnie Worm. I'm sorry if I pronounced your name wrong. For the purpose of the meeting, it's, the addition of the meeting is W E R M E. He had indicated, has anyone put thought to designating an area for these kids to ride so they stay off the streets? You know, we've had comments, we've had, you know, discussions on this. Obviously, there's more than just the element of building a park per se, but there's a tremendous liability with these particular vehicles and having something publicly put together by the town. Certainly something we'll continue to ponder and see if it makes sense to do so. But at this point right now, there's nothing to report as to a specific area. Michael, do you want to bring any further comment on that?
It has been, it has been brought up, and as far as I know, the council of governments has looked at it and not find, not found a suitable location to do something like this in the, in the region, although it does, it does come up from time to time, and I can certainly bring it forth to the director about possible opportunities for a future meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, any other comments?
Your mayor, Council Leader Chip, there's, there's two comments. If somebody wants to read them on the Facebook talk TV.
Yes, that would be fine. Ron, unfortunately, we're getting a little feedback from your line, so I'm going to have someone else read it if that's okay. Anthony, would you mind taking that?
Sure, there's a comment from Hank Petroski saying kids riding on local streets with no helmet. I'm assuming that's what he's talking about being dangerous. And then the comment you read also, Mr. Mayor, from Donnie Wormy.
Thank you. Okay, was there another comment that possibly was seen? Anything else or anyone else sitting here would like to have another comment? Again, not the easiest format to have comments. We do apologize for it being a little bit haphazard in this virtual environment. We're all learning.
Mr. Mayor, there is a comment from Lori Ann Beermonger, who said that the proposed fines, she feels, are excessively high. What charges are the police going to do? What changes are the police going to do to enforce any of these regulations?
Would it be appropriate, I don't know if it's something that would be appropriate to pass to deputy chief or chief to discuss in a moment?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think this is the right forum to discuss our police tactics at this time, but I appreciate the question. It's understood.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take these things into comment and into consideration. You know, I think that we're trying to do the best job to maintain this town's safety. I'm going to take a moment to make a statement. As someone that grew up in this town that had an A T V, that looks at this town as, as my home and, and in the beauty of this town, I've seen a tremendous change, not that I've gotten older, but, you know, I see that those, some people tend not to, a little bit bolder today than it maybe was in my time, where we had possibly an A T V and were much more respectful in how we rode them and where we rode them. You know, we've seen some significant accidents over the past couple of years, loss of life. This is a, these are warnings for us to, you know, to realize that something needs to be done. And obviously, with the rules in place with no chase, it's hard for our police department to properly, probably work with, with our town and making sure they can maintain safety. As well as you've seen, I'm sure everyone has seen as they've drove through town, there's been some significant damages over, you know, town property and even private property. So this is something, again, we'll, we'll look to make sure we get right and, and we'll allow for this to have further comment in a future meeting. We certainly welcome the comments. So that's, I think if there's no other further comments for now, we'll move on in the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, Mike Paulus here. I just have one other person, a resident Debbie Stepnowski called, and I spoke with her at length. And she's in favor of the ordinance and had some questions, I think are pertinent in respect to fines that an other resident had raised to the nature of the fines, but also where those fines and revenues will go. Will they go to create an A T, A T V fund or some type of enforcement fund? Was her question, could it be devoted to establishing a hotline and also potentially even a task force, which I, I thought were all good questions for further deliberation, but just, she had also submitted a written statement, but asked that I had passed that along as well to the, so that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, before you move on, just so it's part of the record, if you're going to continue this proceeding to your February first meeting, you should just state it so the public knows, and it's part of this record, that the meeting is being carried open and continued to February first at, I don't know if it's seven or seven thirty, and that the public will be able to offer comment at that time.
Absolutely, and that, and we will do that. This, this meeting will be continued to the next meeting for open comment, seven thirty, the, the February fourth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. I will put that on the agenda. Thank you very much, Attorney. Okay, any other comments before we move on? Check the chat. All right, seeing none, we're going to move on from this and move into Agenda Item Five, Community Events and Presentations.
Mr. Mayor, one more mayor comment did pop up. I'm sorry.
Sure, not to worry. Thank you, Anthony.
From Alyssa Ann, that says these kids have nothing to do in town, and taking away the little that they have may lead them to being bored, and that's where drugs and alcohol may come into play. Things to consider also.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll certainly put that in consideration when deliberating. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Good.
Um, if you don't mind, I'd like to speak up about it. I am, I strongly support this ordinance, and this is coming from someone that was younger. I actually raced motorcycles. I raised my kids racing motorcycles. We've had go karts and all kind of A T V stuff done it all my life, all my kids' lives. But we always did it off-road. And the, I'm, like I said, very strong on this ordinance because a couple of weeks ago, Officer Lovelace came and addressed us at the council chambers about some of the things that have happened with the kids riding motorcycles. We all see them riding wheelies up and down the street. Couple of kids have been killed in our town on A T Vs on the streets. There was a report of one of the kids riding a motorcycle or a quad kicking a police car. Then there was a tree lighting ceremony with somebody on their motorcycle circling the whole ceremony with people with their kids there, that going on. And as for us as a town providing a place for that, I know the, the dangers of riding, you know, motorcycles and A T Vs, I had been hurt when I was younger. My kids have been hurt when they were younger. I would definitely not support that whatsoever, providing anything for the town, for somebody doing that. But at the same time, if you have a big enough piece of property and you're lucky enough to have one, then you can ride it on it. Or if you have a friend that owns a large piece of property or a farmer that's willing to take on the liability to let you ride on the, those properties, that would be great. And I know there are some motorcycle clubs in the state of Connecticut that people can jo, can join. And I know there are some motorcycle clubs in the state of Connecticut that people can jo, can join and ride their motorcycles on. And to let you know how strong I am against this, I actually asked the, some people in law enforcement if the parents of the kids could be arrested when their kids are caught riding on the streets. So that's all I wanted to leave off, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Goode, I appreciate your comments. Any other comments before we move forward? Anthony, anything else in chat that I may not be seeing?
Yeah, there's a couple more, there's one from someone named HS in reply to the other comment from Alyssa Ann, it said perhaps parents should consider parenting to avoid the drugs and alcohol that Alyssa Ann referenced. Hank Petroski also commented, one issue with off-road is they are riding on someone else's property like the land trust. And not only ruins our property, but puts residents and wildlife at risk while walking on land trust property and encounter these riders. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Pause for just a moment to make sure there's no other comment via direct message or Facebook. All right. Going once, going twice, sold. All right, we're moving on to Agenda Item 5, Community Events and Presentations. And thank you for the comments, again, we'll, we will certainly keep this open for public comment in person in the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, there's no items for, for item 5, no, no business.
Thank you, 6, Citizen Statements and Petitions and Correspondence, seeing none. Item 7, Resignations and Appointments, Appointment of Town Council Members to the Finance Subcommittee.
Yes, I believe this was raised last meeting. And we had outgoing member Joe Fornin, I think it's important to get the committee back on. And if we could for February, I think would be great if the council, if, if you're ready to appoint up to four members for that committee. And I would suggest if you do get appointments tonight, that we could meet on the off week of, say, Tuesday, February 8th. But again.
Have those four members available? Do we have to reappoint two members that are currently on it?
I'm not sure you have to reappoint, I think you can just do a, just a slate of appointments and whatever you decide, three or four.
I believe it was decided four members, those four members. We maintained Deputy Mayor. It's going to maintain, Tampano is going to maintain on the committee, as is Councilor Angeloni. Myself, I am going to be added to the committee and I believe Councilor Vincent Mace will be added to the committee as well. Do we need motions for myself and Mr. Mace to be appointed and then vote thereafter?
You, you can package it however you like with you two or all four of you in one motion, however you want to do it.
I believe, I believe the mayor, it's up to the mayor, that the mayor can just appoint. That's how we've done it in the past, is the mayor just appoints to the committees.
I, I believe that was the case as well, I wasn't sure if I could appoint myself, or if that needed a motion. But if it doesn't need that, I'll, I will appoint the four members as stipulated. Deputy Mayor Tampano, Councilor Angeloni, Councilor Mace and Council, and Mayor McMillan. Okay.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I can send out a poll, we'll just poll the members to see if, what day works in February.
Great, thank you.
And, and timing.
Thank you very much. All right, Agenda Item 8, Unfinished Business Discussion in Action. A, Award of RFQ/P number 4, 2020, 2021, Clerk of the Works for the New North Branford Police Department for Permanent Project Building Committee, is there any, anything to move forward on this, or we still at a standstill on this?
Still at a standstill at, at this point.
Okay, any comment from the Permanent Project Building Committee on this particular aspect? David, would you like to, have a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, we are, I'm all set at this point, thank you.
All right, thank you. And Vincent, anything on? Okay, that should be, you know, we got that there.
As I said, Mr. Mayor, we'll be having our, we did not have our meeting last, last month, so we'll be having our meeting tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Item 8B, Review of Proposed Amendment for Intermunicipal Animal Control Agreement.
Still on hold.
Okay. I did see some things come across today, so that's something hopefully we can move forward in the next meeting, have a conversation with, with Branford. Great, thank you. Okay, 8C, Review and Approval of United Illuminating Wireline Agreement.
No action at this time, Mr. Mayor, we're still waiting to hear back from UI.
Thank you, Attorney Marino. 8D, Update to Town Websites.
Mr. Mayor, as you've been, for the last several months, we've had different folks come before the council to present some examples of their websites. Tonight Dennis Penone, our IT consultant, is going to try to put a bow on the whole thing and kind of summarize where we are and get the next steps, how we should proceed.
Much appreciated, Mr. Penone, the baton is yours.
Okay, good evening, could everyone hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Anthony. As Anthony said, you know, I do a lot of the technology for the town. I was also the one that developed the current town website, albeit almost nine years ago. I think we'll all agree that the website, our website needs some refreshing. So I think the approach that you took was a good one to look at, have vendors come in and look at their offerings. And I just wanted to recap and make sure everyone understood the, the differences of what you've seen. You've seen companies like Purple Dog and Red Rover, Qsend, Civic Plus, Final Site. I think that's all of them. The difference between, between those is that some of them are custom developed like the Purple Dog and Red Rover, and some of them are a subscription. Their subscription, you're basically using their website like Qsend and Civic Plus and, you know, renting your space on it. It's very similar to what we're doing with the new accounting software with Munis. It's a good model, it's a software as a subscription, is what it's called. And there are pros and cons to both. I think the, the upside of doing the subscription version is that you're dealing with companies that have a big base that do this for a living. And you don't have to worry about maintaining it. You don't have to worry about bugs or new browser versions and all those things. And there's going to be a lot of features, more features than we're probably going to need. I think the, if there is a downside is that you don't own the website, you own your design, you own your content, but you have no control over the actual website. Purple Dog, Red Rover, I believe those were built on WordPress. With 60 to 70% of all websites in the world are built on that, so those are good options also. Part of the problem in, you know, any website is not so much the look and feel of it and the navigation, but also the content. And I, that's why I just wanted to make sure that we also understand that, you know, we have to really get our arms around how we manage communications for the town. And that includes things like the website, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, or Code Red, those types of things, so it should be all encompassing and looked at in totality and not just, you know, as the website being a solution. My recommendation is to create a cross-functional Subcommittee to cross-functional meaning town hall departments, police, park rec, fire, maybe library, even Board of Ed. And maybe not so much Board of Ed would be part of it to, or even the library since they have their own websites, but to make sure that they work together. And that there could be some integration between the two. And I think, you know, the committee could determine what those minimum requirements are, what are the basic features and functions that we want? What are the things we know we're lacking today that we need, that people are asking for or complaining about? And what are the things that are nice to have? And determine the budget and how we're going to get to it. So again, one of the biggest differences between those two types of websites is the one you own, you're going to develop it and it's going to be mostly a capital expense. The software is a subscription like Qsend and Civic Plus are going to be some capital to develop it, and then you're going to be paying expense monthly to rent the website. So we have to decide that, and that may determine what goes into the bid and, you know, what we actually are looking for. Develop bid and then hopefully select something. Does that all make sense, any questions?
I hope everybody can hear me okay, I'm having some issues today, but being that we're a smaller town, we don't have designated ID people, is there one version that would benefit the town over the other? As far as owning the website or renting space on somebody else's server?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question, I believe all the companies you looked at offered support. No, definitely the bigger ones like Qsend and Civic Plus, you're going to get support. You know, albeit you're going to be calling an 800 number and putting a ticket in. But, you know, they have staff to do that, those other smaller companies can provide the support. And if there was an issue, since you own the website, you could always take it and have someone else support it for you. So again, pros and cons to both types of websites. I, I looked at some sample, some towns in the area as an example, Durham uses Qsend. So there's another small town, and that's what they use.
Thank you. Very much. And obviously the uses of this, depending on the sensitive data that we may be going through, if there's any use of payments or things such as that, and this, you know, obviously these sites are, you can utilize that. Is there a difference if we, if we host it ourselves or own it or rent it, do you know?
No, I mean, I do know, I don't think there's a difference, I'm sorry. As far as payments, you know, we do that, we take payments now online and we use Point and Pay, which is secure and PCI compliant, so that's not an issue. The town should have, and our current website does have, a privacy policy stating that we will not, you know, use any information we get, names, email addresses or whatever, we won't sell them. So every town should have that anyways.
Right, council members, any other questions for Mr. Penone? Okay. Seeing none, I thank you, Mr. Penone, for your time, I do believe we will discuss this and look towards building out a Subcommittee and moving this forward within, within our agenda.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
By all means, thank you so much. Okay. Last item in 8, 8E, State Reimbursement as NBHS Project Tabled Until May 22. I believe that will stay as, as we see there. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, New Business Discussion in Action. 9A, Resolution Amending, A Resolution Appropriating $67,750,000 For The Planning, Design, Construction, Equipping, And Furnishing Of The New North Branford High School And Authorizing The Issuance Of $67,750,000 Bonds Of The Town To Meet Said Appropriation And Pending The Issuance thereof, The Making Of Temporary Borrowings For Such Purpose.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, on the packet you have in front of you, the first page is my cover memo, the second page, the paragraph that really is key where it says resolve, that's where it talks about the additional $2.6 million, raising the bond authorization from $67,750,000 to $70,350,000. And if you look on page number 3 of the packet, number, it's number 3 at the top of the page that I have there for you. One of the questions might be, well, I thought we put $4 million into this project, how are we only going 2.6? And the difference is the bond resolution amount versus the budget amount. You see, the budget amount was originally $66,242,391, and that revised number is now $70,331,996, and the page 4 of that is actually the budget that was prepared by Marnie for the building committee that shows that new number. At the back to page 3, the $67,750,000, to raise it to the $7,350,000, we rounded the $70,331,000 to $70,350,000, that's where the $2.6 million comes in. So Robinson and Cole, our bond counsel, drew up this resolution to increase the authorization from the $67.750,000,000 to a new number of $70,350,000. Doing a motion to approve that resolution.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like, this is Councilor Angeloni.
Thank you, Councilor.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council approves the resolution as referenced below and attached to this memorandum in its entirety. Resolution Amending A Resolution Appropriating $67,750,000 For The Planning, Design, Construction, Equipping, And Furnishing Of A New North Branford High School And Authorizing The Issuance Of $67,750,000,000 Bonds Of The Town To Meet Said Appropriation And Pending The Issuance thereof, The Making Of Temporary Borrowings For Such Purpose.
Okay, I see a motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I see the motion, but I also see on page 2 where the resolve is $67,000,000 to $70,350,000, am I missing something?
No, you're correct, it's just the way the wording is, the, the new number will be, I, I'm not sure why that they referenced it that way, it's, it's a, it's a resolution amending the $67,750,000, but they failed to put in the actual motion that you guys need to make, the new number.
And that motion has to be changed, it's not $67,000,000, it's $70,350,000.
Right, but you're amending the $67,750,000. That's the way Robinson Cole makes their motion.
Right, and on the second page, it, all of that is referenced in there, that they're, you're changing the $67,750,000 to $70,350,000, on your, on page 101 in our packet. All of that is stated in there, which is part, that becomes part of the motion also.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, it's very confusing, I, I, I agree with you, it's, it's confusing.
It is a bit confusing, okay.
But good to stipulate in discussion, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, it's Victor, am I allowed to talk?
Yes, you can, you can make a statement briefly, please.
I just texted Dave and, as two people on the Permanent Project Building Committee, we never saw the final numbers yet, so just be aware of it, that we never got the detailed numbers yet, sorry, council.
Thank you, Mr. Peter Andrew, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Peter Andrew. Appreciate it.
And my question is that does the project committee have to have the final number before a motion is made on this here, Mr. Mayor?
No, I believe it's council's ability to make that motion and then it would. Pen down and onto the committee itself.
But we already, we already voted in December to add four point eight million dollars to the high school project. And after going through with the bond council, they agreed that out of the four point eight. We're only adding two point six on to the amount that we originally, that's what the purpose of this motion is. So the building committee, those are the numbers they presented to us and that's why we came up with this. That's how the bond council came up with this number.
Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Angeloni, that is correct. So if the four point. Eight million is added in there, then the numbers should be okay. We weren't aware of it, though. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Yeah, that that's that's what the bond council looked at, so. According to them and all the numbers we've been presented, that we should be okay with this. They're the ones that presented this to us, so.
Yes, correct. Council Angeloni, as Victor said, we we gave it to you guys in December at our one of our last. Uh intern meetings with you guys, so those numbers should be accurate, but to Victor's statement, yes, we didn't get the final number. Um, and we probably, I guess, will have that hopefully Victor tomorrow night. So you guys do have correct numbers. Thank you, Council Angeloni. I just wanted to make sure that the permanent project building committee put a lot of time and effort not being slighted, that's all.
Certainly have.
Yeah, no problem.
Gentlemen, thank you. Counselors, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? All right, we have a a motion by Council Angeloni, again, seconded by Councilor Diamond. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstained? That passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item nine B discussion in action regarding power truck replacement, fire act grant application. We will hand the baton over to Anthony. If if you want to take lead on this for the moment and you can. Jurassic to those members of the fire department that are going to speak on it, please.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. A topic that's been before the town council several times in the last few years is the replacement. Of Tower One. Tower One is over thirty two years old. It is due for replacement. We have tried unsuccessfully in the past to get some assistance to firefighter grants. Uh we believe we have a better opportunity this year. The deadline to file is the twenty first of this month. Uh one of the criteria that's hurt us in the past is call volume that's not being considered this year. So we feel our chances might be a little greater. Uh we're also going for a a like for like kind of proposal where. We're replacing basically looking to propose to replace the identical truck that we currently have at the firehouse. Uh Deputy Chief Mark Amertrudo has prepared a a slide presentation. I'm not sure, Mike, if you could share the control so that Mark can show that. And just to go over again, what we're looking for tonight is not to spend. One point three million dollars of town money. That discussion may come subsequently. All looking for tonight basically is the concurrence that we want to apply for a fire act grant for up to a million dollars. Uh the cost of the truck as it sits now, we believe to be about one point three million dollars. So. Anything north of a million dollars, we have to come out of the town's pockets subsequently. Uh so I'll let Mark go through and run through the presentation he prepared. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Chief. Folks, on behalf, first of all, on behalf of the other of the chief officers, the Fortifier Commissioners and. Our firefighters who are sprinkled about Facebook and uh Zoom here. Thank you for the opportunity to to bring this up. I'm going to walk you through. The presentation that was sent out to you. I believe it went out this morning. Uh I won't go through and read it to you. I'll try and hit the highlights to keep it relatively brief. What you can see in the picture is our nineteen eighty nine tower ladder, as you heard Chief Esposito say. Uh it's thirty two years old already. It was purchased in nineteen eighty nine for a cost of four hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, which in today's dollars. Is about nine hundred and sixty. The biggest issue with this vehicle is downtime issues and age. You probably believe you've heard in the past that the NFPA standards call for apparatus to be replaced at twenty years. In some cases, you can extend beyond that, but thirty two years is, as they would say, I guess, a pretty long in the tooth. Just looking at the last two years, we spent about forty thousand dollars on just this one vehicle. And that's in repairs. Prior years, there were some years where there was those numbers were were even bigger than that. But over the over the recent years, the vehicle has really required a fair amount of repairs. Actually, it came back into service this afternoon. It was out for another week, went out a week ago today. Uh for more hydraulic issues. As the truck gets older, we have to start worrying about things like parts availability. Uh two years ago, when we needed a new control board for the electronics to control the ladder. That had to be sourced across the US and they found finally found somebody who had new old stock that they could put on this. So just looking at the last two years. The rig has been out of service twenty times, about once every thirty eight days it's going out. And it's out of service anywhere between one and twenty eight days is the longest it's been out. So as you can see, it's it's been a bit of an issue. So what's this vehicle used for? Well, we we have one in the town and to put it. Um as succinctly as possible, it is our giant rolling toolbox of equipment. Uh it carries in addition to the the big area ladder, uh it carries lots of ground ladders. Power tools, hand tools, power saws, all types of things. It is uh the vehicle that we use as the base of operations at any building type. Alarm situation. In addition, it's got some other uses as well. The uh one of the important things is it also carries the equipment that we would use in the event that we have to rescue one of our own, so it's. It's it's a fairly important vehicle for us. A number of years ago, a few years ago, Chief Seward, and I think it was the right thing to do, started to reduce the number of times this vehicle would be dispatched. So as to minimize the wear and tear on it and because we are having dependability issues. If you look at the number of times that it should have gone out in twenty twenty one, it was about a hundred and fifty responses. To put that in perspective for you, that's about a thirty percent or about a third. Of the number of times we go out to an incident where it's not a medical call. In terms of buildings in the community, there are a hundred and thirty four buildings in the town. Uh almost eighty percent of them are in District One, which is where the rig is housed. It would be needed if if they caught fire. However, we also use it at. Residential fires and you'll see the last slide I show you. Um is it operating up at a at a house fire on Reed's Gap Road? So why are why are we asking to have this replaced? Not only is the vehicle thirty two years old, there's about a two and a half year cycle for us to get this replaced. If we start tomorrow, we will not see this vehicle until sometime in twenty twenty four. It's about a four to six month total process to create the specifications. Put it out to bid, evaluate those bids, make a recommendation, get approval. From contract signing right now, the major vendors are telling us. Minimum twenty months from the time you sign the contract to the time the vehicle comes into the building, so this. Truck is going to be thirty five years old by the time it gets replaced if we start today or tomorrow. It's, as you heard us say, and I you may have heard in the past. Downtime is an issue, dependability is an issue, and now we're starting to worry about. Things related to to liability in and of itself. So what does a new vehicle get us? Well, it gets us a lot of the things that. We all take for granted in our in our own personal vehicles. I I toyed with the idea of putting a picture of a nineteen eighty nine Chevrolet Caprice up here. In the picture of my cellphone from nineteen eighty nine, but. I decided I probably shouldn't do that. ABS rollover stability control, collision mitigation, basically. Keeping this vehicle just like you do with it with an automobile from hitting the vehicle in front of it. On top of that, all types of advanced engine pump and ladder safety and operability items are included. New vehicles get us airbags. Um strengthened Cabs, vehicle data recording, electronic vehicle management and troubleshooting. And and as you heard Chief Esposito say. We know we can't walk in the door and say we need one point three million dollars and expect to get it tonight. What our approach, and you'll see it in a few minutes, is to request three hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year that could go. To one of two places and you'll see that in a minute. So once in a while, we get the question, why do we need a vehicle like this? Why do we need to have a tower ladder? The first thing that comes to mind is uh Insurance Services Office rates us. And the department has worked very hard in the past ten years or actually fifteen years to get our insurance rating improved. And that has happened. One of the key points in that evaluation is, do you have a ladder truck and can you provide those services? If we do not have a ladder truck, our ISO rating. calculation will go down and in the net result will be a fire insurance increase to taxpayers. It's very hard to calculate what that number would be, but it's pretty obvious that our rate, our rating would go down. We would also have to dispatch more fire apparatus to get the same amount of equipment to an incident. I know it's no surprise to you that. All volunteer organizations, not just the fire service, are struggling to have. To maintain their rate, their numbers of people. As you can imagine. Um we're in that same boat as everybody else. We're not in as bad a shape as a lot of departments. But we struggle just like every other volunteer department in the country. So the other question was, gee, can you use it? Can you get a ladder from a surrounding town? Well, I guess probably the first thing we have to keep in mind is that this vehicle needs to be in front of the building. That picture you see right there is of the night that we had a fire at Stanley T. Williams. And uh as you can imagine, what you can't see are the other four or five fire trucks that are that are there. But if this vehicle came in fifteen minutes later, it would not have been in front of the building and. For the firefighters would not have been able to work there. That night, there was a fire in the furnace room, which worked its way all the way up. And through and up into that stack um that you see in the middle of the picture. So that's just kind of gives gives you a basic idea. To get any credit whatsoever from ISO, we would have to have what's called automatic aid. Whenever we had an alarm that required this type of rig, it would have to be dispatched from a mutual aid partner. Unfortunately, there's probably no mutual aid partner around us that would be willing to send their ladder truck. Anywhere between fifty and a hundred times a year into our town. And that's if it's available and not out at another incident. So those are just a few of the reasons why we need it. We came up with four options. The first option is the replacement and you heard Chief Esposito say like for like. That first picture that I showed you is the nineteen eighty nine rig. That we have today and a two thousand and twenty one uh demo that was sold a few weeks ago. For one million, two hundred and seventy two thousand dollars and two days later. Uh a six percent price increase went in, so that's that's how you get to one million, three fifty. The other thing is I know we've come back a number of times in recent years because our vehicle repair budget. Was overspent and by replacing the vehicle, that should alleviate most of that problem. A second option, it's a really good option, is a demo vehicle. Demonstrator vehicles are built by the manufacturer. They're used to be shown around the country and then they are sold. It's a great opportunity to buy a vehicle. You can get it quicker, but because of the long lead times. People who traditionally would have not purchased a demo rig are buying them, so they're very hard to come by. And if we found a suitable one, we would have to act pretty quickly to purchase. What is quickly? We probably have thirty to forty five days uh before someone else came in and was able to purchase it. Um if we weren't able to strike a deal there. There are two other options. We felt it was appropriate to give you these two options. And quite frankly, the 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 next one is the one that I thought would be. Um a very good approach and it's starting to not look that way. Factory refurbishment, literally taking that vehicle, putting it on a flatbed and sending it back to the factory. Where they will go literally.
I know, I put it there.
To stern and they will.
I know. That's when I emptied the filter.
Sorry? They will rebuild it stem to stern and we have had the uh the representative in, we spoke with them last week and they looked at the vehicle. One of the biggest things that they cannot do is bring this vehicle up to the latest standards. All of those great safety things that I told you about and operability. They can't do it. Uh it requires a higher level of electronics out of the engine. And certain other components in the vehicle that would be way too much money to. Replace. If we refurbished this vehicle, you might, you'd probably get ten years out of it. The big thing that the the representative from the factory kept saying is. Remember that you have a risk that this vehicle could go down. Two weeks after we bring it back to you for something that was in good shape when it left the factory, but now it fails. So that's a that's a real possibility. There is no loaner vehicle available, so we would probably have to try and rent one or borrow one. Depending on what. But you know, how you work the deal with the manufacturer, they may have something that we can, we could get our hands on. Uh so that is not the biggest issue here. To put it in perspective, Willimantic Fire Department is refurbishing an early two thousands vehicle, which is about eleven, twelve years newer. And they are spending six hundred thousand dollars on it and they're having a little bit less work than we would be required on ours. So originally I thought this might be our best option, but it's it's starting to look like. It isn't, and when I show the financials, I think you might agree. Then the last was to look at it at a used vehicle. Uh we started looking around and. You're probably only going to get about five years out of a used tower ladder and quite frankly. You may or may not be purchasing someone else's problem and. That puts us in a in a in a new situation. So to kind of lay the numbers out for you, I won't go through all of them, but just to give you an idea. We're looking at with the latest price increase, one million, three fifty to replace the vehicle. We think we could get a a demo for about one point two. And we're seeing ballpark estimates will have a better one not too long from now. Uh of anywhere between five hundred and six hundred plus thousand dollars to refurbish the vehicle. And I've done a fair amount of research on used vehicles. Anything that you look at that's under three hundred thousand is in worse shape than our vehicle. It's just a little newer. So that that's not a a cheap way to go. So in terms of what's our best long term option, like for like, new tower ladder really is our best. Option and that'll get us about twenty five years. A demo would be a good financial option if A, if we can locate one. And B, if we can find one that's got the uh the equipment configuration that that we would need. And again, about twenty five years. The refurbishment, the financial risk, the downside risk. The refurbishment, the financial risk, the downside risk, the inability to get to the new standards. And the fact that you only get about ten years out of it really kind of put this as a, as a distant third. And the cheapest is the used vehicle, but frankly, we're just kicking the can down the road. So looking at it in terms of cost per year over the useful life of the vehicle, the demo and the new tower ladder actually come out to be the lowest total cost per year. Sorry. Okay, so what are we asking you for? One authorization to apply for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant for one million dollars. There's a one million dollar cap on the AFG, and that would be one million out of a, out of a price estimate of about a million, three fifty. Second thing is the authorization to start the replacement process. That would be developing specifications, getting more firm pricing, and starting that search for a suitable demo rig. We'd like to put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars into next year, this coming year's capital budget. And that three fifty could be used for either the excess of the total price of the vehicle over the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, if we're fortunate enough to receive the grant. Or it could be the first lease purchase payment for the vehicle if we have to purchase it outright. It gives us the flexibility to purchase a demo if one, a suitable one comes available. And, uh, the Board of Fire Commissioners and the Town Council, uh, approve such a purchase. And then just to give you a basic idea, what we would do is, uh, we will finish. Assuming we're given the authorization to do so, we will finish the application for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant this week. And starting over the next three or four months, we'll develop those specifications. We are told that before June, we will receive notification whether we did or did not get the grant. Um, they're saying May, uh, May to late May. I, I'd like to think that's the case in the past. It's been longer than that. We can start the process to look for a demo vehicle. We can start talking to the vendor about what might become available. July fir- after July first, send out the RFP and the specifications to the vendors. August and October, we would receive those back. Uh, finish up our search for a demo and make a recommendation. And then, once the Board of Fire Commissioners, uh, makes that final decision, come to you for a purchase decision and the contract execution. And if we did that approach in summer of twenty twenty-four, we would see the new vehicle. If we found a demo vehicle, we might be able to have that vehicle in-house, uh, as early as November. Just looking at the timeline for everything. So there's that picture of the tower operating at, uh, Reed's Gap Road. Uh, unfortunately, because it's a, an overhead shot, you don't see most of the house. Uh, we were able to save a fair part of, fair amount of the home. Uh, it's just that that was taken with our drone and that, that's where that is. So if there, um, any questions, Chief Esposito or myself would be more than happy to attempt to answer them for you.
Just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, tonight, all we're looking for is the authorization to proceed with the Fire Act grant. Uh, we're going to come back, the board, uh, and their budget process will go through an entire apparatus replacement strategy, which will include, I'm sure, uh, money for the tower down the road, how that pans out, uh, has not been determined yet. But tonight, all we're looking for is your concurrence with the process of applying for up to a million dollars, with the understanding that anything north of a million dollars a town will come up with if and when we're successful.
I have a question. Excuse my ignorance, what's the difference between a demo unit and a used unit? I don't understand how a fire engine could be a demo versus something that somebody had, and that's a used vehicle. What, what is the difference? What's the benefits of a demo versus the used?
So the demo is, it, it's a demonstrator. They build a vehicle on spec based on what most users would use, and they bring it essentially around the country and show it to prospective customers, so that they'll come back and buy one of their own. So it's like a, like if you bought a dealer demonstrator for a car. It'll have some miles on it, but it's never been titled. So it probably will have a thousand or two miles on it, um, a few hundred hours, but that's it. It's essentially a new vehicle and it is sold to you as a new vehicle. A used vehicle would be something that was in service for anywhere from ten to twenty years in a fire department, and they are getting rid of it now. They're trading it in or selling it off.
So I take it a demo has never been involved in a fire itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yes, Counselor Mason, it's not owned by a town. It's owned by E One or Pierce, and they bring it to conventions to be looked at for possible vet suitors to purchase one like that as spec. So it's, it's a new vehicle, just as if you were going to, uh, a Chevy dealership and, uh, the Suburban that was being used for, on, on the showroom versus maybe one that's brand new coming off a factory.
All right, thank you. I, I was like a little confused between a demo and a used. Now I understand what the demo is about. Thank you very much, guys.
So, um, that said, just to make sure I clarify, uh, if we were to give authorization to go forward with the grant, um, are we essentially adhering to, um, whatever the cost is above and beyond a million? Or is that something still that can be, um, decided once we have that grant in place?
I think you're, you're financially committing, knowing that the new truck is going to be a million, three plus or minus, and the max grant we can get is a million. Part of the motion tonight is the understanding that, you know, you're going to be able to get the town a one point three million dollar truck for a three hundred thousand dollars. Is that, is that a risk that you guys want to take? Uh, is that, you know, it's a roll of the dice. We may not get the grant. We may get the grant. If we don't get the grant, then as Chief Ametrido mentioned, you know, we'll try to factor that into our uh, fire department equipment reserve and, and, you know, appropriately fund it in over the next few years. Uh, but the goal for tonight is just to say, you know, can, we have this opportunity to apply for a million dollar grant to offset a million dollars out of a one point three million dollar truck. Uh, knowing that the three hundred thousand dollar delta is going to be on, on the town to come up with. And as Chief Ametrido mentioned, this could be subsequently, you know, a year down the road, plus two years maybe before the money. I mean, there might be a prepayment discount for an upfront portion. Some of the manufacturers offer that. But the lion's share of the money will not be due until the truck is delivered, uh, down the road. So it's just a matter of, uh, it's, it's concurrence that you want us, you, allowing us to apply for the grant with the understanding that anything above a million dollars will be, will be borne by the town.
Chief Esposito, is there, um, is there an out, is there the possibility that we will be granted less than a million? So let's say we are granted seven hundred thousand and the truck is still one point three five. Now we're on the hook for another three hundred grand on there. Um, that obviously would change the, the economics of this. So is that also viable or is it, you're getting the million or you're getting nothing?
Go ahead, Mark, go ahead.
Chief Ametrido, thank you.
No, no, no problem whatsoever. The, the short answer is you either get the million or you don't. There is in the regulations a stipulation that if, for some reason, they want to give out the, uh, more money than the federal government has put in, they reserve the right to prorate back over the eighteen or nineteen years of this grant. I don't ever remember them doing that. So the, the, the direct answer to your question is, it's basically going to be, you're either going to be given the million or you're going to be turned down.
Right. Okay, so there's not the possibility of it, of us being on the hook for six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And then if that was the case, you would have the opportunity to turn it down.
Right. Council members, any questions? And if you would, if you're going to ask a question, we can't, being that the, the presentation's still up. Are, is everyone fair with getting off the presentation, getting into, uh, Chief Ametrido, anything else in the presentation that you want to show on here? As long as we come back, that we need to, why don't we go back to the, uh, the viewer I could see folks, uh, raise their hand? Again, please, um, when you do speak, state your name so that we can have that for the minutes. All right, any council members have any, any questions?
Nope, just want to say thanks for the
Councilmember Pleatia?
Yeah, I'm sorry, um. So we need to make a decision tonight, correct? Because you need to have this in by the twenty-first. Is that accurate, Chief?
Correct.
Um, all right, well, I, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, allow the, uh, fire department to go through with applying for the grant. Uh, with the caveat that the, uh, town is capped at, uh, coming out of pocket, no more than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right, uh, Councilpleatia, I'm just going to restate
You get that?
Correct me if you're wrong, because you were coming in pretty, pretty choppy. Uh, so I believe you had made the motion that we would You're, you're coming in and out. I, I believe you had made the motion that you were going to, we would approve the commission to, um, go after the grant with the stipulation that, uh, the town would be, would be, uh, only in the, in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand in, uh, in the additional cost. Is that correct? Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. For Councilpleatia, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Diamond. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, um, does that mean
Counselor Mason?
Up to three hundred and fifty thousand for the, in the capital budget, starting tonight?
No.
No. No, that would, that would, another part of the presentation that they would like to see three hundred and fifty thousand available. That's something as, as, uh, Chief Esposito indicated would be, uh, jurisdiction down the line and discussed down the line. Um, currently that we're just giving them the approval to, uh, apply for the grant. And should they be granted the grant of a million dollars, uh, whereas we would find up to, uh, uh, one point three five, um, then three hundred and fifty thousand would be on the hook for North Branford to pay in getting that one point three five million dollar vehicle.
Thank you for clarification, Mayor.
By all means, sir. Okay, so we have that. Any other discussion?
Walter Goode here.
Counselor Goode.
So if we do not get the grant whatsoever, we don't get the fire truck, right?
At, at this point, that, that's the, that's the position. And then the fire commission, as they prepare the budget going forward, uh, are going to look at the entire apparatus replacement schedule. And I'm sure that that will be factored into their schedule going forward, that they'll be working on in February, uh, to begin the twenty-two, twenty-three budget process, including the capital reserve. So, um, it's kind of a chicken or the egg, which is going to come first. We're not going to have the answer, obviously, in time for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, because as Chief Ametrido mentioned, you won't, you won't hear it probably until May. Uh, I guess a safe bet, as, as Chief also mentioned, was we put three hundred and fifty thousand into the twenty-two, twenty-three equipment reserve, you could either use it as the town's balance if we're successful with the grant or potentially as year one funding of a, say, a five-year lease purchase if we're unsuccessful with the grant. Uh, but anything would come back, nothing, nothing would happen without coming back to the council. Rest assured that either way, if we, if we are successful to get the authorization for the three fifty, that would come back to you. If it is factored into the equipment reserve program, that'll come back to you. Nothing's going to be spent without getting the, the council on board.
But Anthony, we're, we're not on the hook at, if we go with this tonight, we're not on the hook for buying that fire truck, right? If we don't get the grant.
That is correct. As of tonight, that is a correct statement, yes.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing no further discussion.
Uh, I, I would just like to address
My apologies, I'm not seeing what this is.
Sorry.
Uh, sorry, Chief Ametrido, my apologies.
If, if I may, um, fully understanding that we're not getting approval to replace the vehicle, that doesn't change the fact that we have an ailing vehicle that is either going to have to be replaced or, or something different within the department will, will have to be done. I just wanted to be, be sure that, that that was the case. We fully understand what you are and are not approving tonight.
Great, absolutely. We understand that. This is, uh,
Hopefully approved.
Conversation. Absolutely. Thank you, Chief. Okay, uh, any, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll bring this to a vote. All four, say aye. Opposed? Abstained? That passes unanimously.
On behalf of the members, I'd like to thank you for your support, councilors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Esposito. You know, we, we look forward to this and do your best to get this grant and make it a really easy decision for the town. Thank you.
Okay, no pressure.
Not, not at all, not at all. All right, we're going to move on to, uh, item nine, C, financial report for month end, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
The, uh, finances of the town remain very strong. Again, if you look at the, uh, top line property taxes comparing year over year, sixty-three point five percent compared to sixty-two point eight percent last year. Overall revenues a full percent ahead of last year, fifty-six point five compared to fifty-five point five last year. Uh, overall expenditures are down forty-nine point seven expended versus fifty-one point four, another favorable sign. Uh, the only department that's showing up over expended is technology. If you look at the second page, however, it's not really over expended out-the-door money. It's tied up in POs. Uh, but we've spent about forty-two thousand out of about fifty-seven thousand so far. Uh, as our life gets more and more technologically driven, whether it's door openers or time clocks or whatever else happens to be the case, uh, phone systems and such. Uh, there's a lot more, obviously, technological needs that we have, and that budget will continue to grow over time as, as we become more and more, uh, dependent on technology for, for most of our functions. Uh, aside from that, the report remains unremarkable. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Um, Anthony, this is Counselor Angeloni. Um, so the supplemental bills, tax bills that went out in January, were most of them motor vehicle or what percentage would you say were motor vehicle versus real estate?
All the supplemental tax bills go out, our, our real estate, our, excuse me, our motor vehicle, I'm sorry. It's any cars that are registered, O- October one is the magic date. So we're on the October one, twenty twenty grand list. So if you registered a car after October one, twenty twenty, but before August thirty-first of twenty twenty-one, you got a supplemental tax bill that was due one, one, twenty-two. There was an issue, I know, I'm sure it's been all over the place. The, the way the process works is the motor vehicle department sends, uh, us the information to bill taxes. It goes to the assessor's office, then on to the tax department, on to the person that prints the bills, and out they go. Uh, there were several folks who, I, I believe on social media had commented that some of their numbers were, were quite skewed from prior years. Uh, I did bring that to the attention of the task collector and the assessor, and they did jump on that right away. Contacted that person who, uh, had made a point on, on social media to make that comment, and they did resolve it. Uh, it, it's, it's a flawed, it's a flawed system. I, I will tell you, I've told you for thirty years. We spend eighty percent of our time on twenty percent of the dollars. It's a terrible system because we lose more money on, on motor vehicles. If you register a car as Rose Angeloni this year, you could rose, register it as Rose Anne Angeloni next year. Rose Marie Angeloni the year after that, Ari Angeloni the year after that, and you end up with multiple accounts. And you end up with multiple accounts that we can't go after. You may not, you may not pay your bills under one of these numbers. It's, it's a, it's a, or if you move. We have a lot of transient population, especially in the condos on one thirty-nine, people are there, they leave. Once they leave, you, you, we, we hire, um, a collection agency to try to track them down. But we lose money on motor vehicles because we, we can't, you know, put a lien on somebody's house for their car taxes. So it, it's a system that, and the states talked about it for years. They wanted to take it over. The concern obviously is they're not going to make the town whole on the money they're going to take over. Just my editorial comment that it, it's, it's, it's seriously eighty percent of our time on twenty percent of our dollars. It, it's, it's, if you're looking at it from a manager, it's, it's why are you doing this? It's craziness. So I, I, the January bills that go out, supplemental bills by nature are all motor vehicle bills that people registered after October one, but prior to August thirty-one of that following year.
Thank you for the clarifications.
No problem. Maybe there's any, any question on, on, you know, maybe watching on TV or listening to it. If everything, any question, I think, please feel free to call the tax office or the assessor's office. You know, they're happy to look into it to see what the discrepancies are. I mean, it's, again, it's a flawed system. The numbers come to us uh, from the motor vehicle department and, you know, there, there sometimes there's errors. That's all I'll say.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments? Anthony? All right. Seeing none, we're going to go to item nine D, approval of tax refunds.
Done move.
Motion by
Second.
Second by Council Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstained? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're on to item, gen item ten, citizen statements and petitions. Again, I'll reiterate, uh, due to the environment that we're in, please be respectful if you're going to uh, ask a question, raise your hand, state your name, and please keep it to three minutes or under. Do I have anyone that would like to have a citizen statement and or petition?
Mr. Mayor, there are a couple of comments on Facebook.
Esposito, would you please read those for us, please?
I would be honored.
Thank you, sir.
The first one is Randy Chitten in, in reply to the question of why the, uh, what changes are the police department doing to force these? He says that's why the penalties may be so high. And then to the comment that the kids have nothing to do. There are things that kids can engage with. Randy mentioned also, he posted a video on the North Branford Community Bride page, which explains why this has become a problem in town. And that's, that's on comment. Tucka TV, uh, reposted the link for the covidtest.gov website.
Thank you and thank you to Tucka TV. Okay, any other comments? All right, seeing none, we're going to move into, uh, item eleven, executive session. ACGS section one dash two hundred six A, personal issues, town manager evaluation. Uh, we will bid adieu to Tucka TV and the folks that are on here. I, I'd like to quickly say thank you for everyone presenting tonight. Chief Ametrudo, Chief Esposito, thank you for the presentation. We're, uh, we're happy that, uh, this is something we get to look at and move forward with hopefully. Uh, and all the folks that, uh, that wrote comments with the, uh, public meeting as well. We thank you for that as well.
I'll make a motion.
Executive session?
Second.
All right, motion made by Council Diamond, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. We shall go into executive session. Thank you again all. We appreciate it. Good evening.